For December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurzweil. Lisa, let the rule call show Councilmember Kibble will be absent this evening. And it looks like we have everyone else. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to excuse Councilmember Kibble.
I'll support.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? Sorry, Councilmember Richards, all opposed?
No, I'm in favor.
Yep, nope, for sure. Thank you. We'll move on to the approval of city council minutes, November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
On the first page there, Lisa, just a small correction on the last paragraph. The public comment, the woman's name is, starts with a K. It's K-A-S-E-Y. Bill, that's all I had.
Anyone else with anything on the minutes? Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the bills this evening. Councilmember Kennedy?
I'm over the bills.
Support.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Approval of tonight's agenda? Councilmember Kennedy?
I'll move the agenda.
I'll support.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address, and remember that we have a two-minute time limit for our public comments. City Clerk Deaton, did we have anyone raising their hand or virtual hand for public comment this evening?
We did earlier, but as of right now, we do not.
Okay. We will close public comment then. And we will move on to the discussion of downtown, and we will head over to Nate to take the lead.
All right, thanks, Mayor Palchad. Good evening, everyone. So, over the last week, there's been a couple of different grant opportunities that have come available. One is through Oakland County, which is a ten million dollar grant to assist businesses that have been adversely affected by COVID- nineteen. Seven million dollars of that is going to, they're going to mail checks to businesses that were approved previously. And then the other three million is, I believe, two million is coming from the county's general fund, and then another million dollars will be going to businesses to purchase items that they may need. I sent out reminders to businesses about this, as well as the, another grant that is coming open tomorrow at nine AM from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, which is a ten million dollar grant opportunity that'll be going out statewide. Again, I sent our businesses, all the ones that I had contact information for, and then for those that I didn't, I just went through their contact us on the website to get them this information. I provided them with the details. They also provided the the questions that are going to be submitted, because the grant from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, which is opening tomorrow, is a first-come, first-served basis. So, if we can get people to apply as close to nine AM as possible, that would be great. I posted on our social, or on our Facebook page, and I sent out multiple to most people. The DDA Board of Directors met on Thursday, December tenth. During that meeting, we had a presentation from Annika Norris with Main Street Oakland County. She just kind of went over the benefits of Main Street, what the county is doing, and provided D-Board with some information on that. Additionally, the DDA Board approved five hundred dollars for a downtown shopping promotion. Basically, it's what it's doing is encouraging residents to kind of shop safely in our downtown, and then we're going to purchase five hundred dollars worth of gift cards from our businesses that have their indoor dining services closed. So, it'll be about seventy dollars from each business, and then we're going to give those away after the first of the year. Let's see here. And then, the library has informed me that there have been more than sixty people that have signed up for the Snowflake Scavenger Hunt downtown, so it's good to see a lot of participation there. And then I also, on, I think it was Wednesday of last week, I helped Dana Johnson set up the Two Gingerbread people next to Santa's mailbox, and those, you know, it's a nice little touch there. Let's see here. As far as the Draft Street Building goes, we're still in discussions with them. I believe they're going to be seeking demolition permits soon to begin renovating the inside of the building. That's all I have for tonight.
Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually have a couple of things. I don't know if you want me to do them all at once, or take turns, or however you want to do that.
Councilmember Walton, you go ahead, and then we'll head over to Councilmember Dill.
Thank you. You know, Nate, I just want to say thank you to the DDA Call Charts and Santa's Alves for their work on the letters for Santa House. It's the gingerbread boys and girls cutout. That's amazing. It looks great. I've seen a lot of great posts online, so that's really great, and it's really great that the Santa's helpers were able to get responses to all those letters out there. I also wanted to bring highlight to the lights in the downtown area. In the past, we've left them up past Valentine's Day, because they're red and white. And I just want to know if we're going to keep that going this year to keep it more festive and add a little extra special appeal to our walkable downtown area.
Yeah, that's something I think that we could do.
Okay.
Maybe I can talk to Public Works and Paul, and we can probably get something set up.
Fabulous. I think it just, I mean, we always have that little extra little on our downtown area, so I want to keep that going. The last thing I have is, do we have a welcome wagon or some type of welcome to the community for new residents? We had one in the past, and I believe the woman that had that up did pass away, and I don't know if Chamber took that over, or if we don't have anything, or what we do now for new residents.
I'm not sure on that one. I don't know if, if we have, are you talking about, you said for residents, or?
Yeah, like the welcome packet usually has coupons or, you know, information, good contact numbers for people, the schools, the city, garbage, things like that.
Okay.
And, you know, sometimes it has really nice suggestions or coupons for the local shops, and I'm just, if we don't have it, I'd like to see that maybe brought back.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. Councilmember Dill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, I wanted to make sure I wasn't on mute. I just wanted to say I really appreciate the, the DDA. I was thinking with the five hundred dollar downtown shopping promotion that I was like, thinking that was great for retail, but what about the restaurants? And then when I continued to read on, that they're going to be getting gift certificates to the downtown restaurants, and I think that's such a great combination, because obviously, the restaurants are hurting right now. So, I just thought that was really great. I just wanted to say thank you for that. And on the welcome wagon thing, I do remember when I first moved to town that I got that, and it's really cool. And I thought that the Chamber took that over, but maybe not. But, you know, I would, I'd love to help do that, too. I think that was a really great thing when I first moved here to figure out how to contact people, so.
Yeah, I can reach out to the Chamber, too, and see if that's something they're doing, and if it's not, then we can maybe get something.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Dill. Councilmember Kurzweil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've noticed, Nate, that a couple cities are putting on their DDA website a map of the downtown area and of the neighborhoods where there are Christmas lights. So, they are using that as a PR sort of tour, a PR opportunity to bring people into their particular cities. And I just wanted to let you know, if you haven't driven around South Lyon, I'm telling you, it's, it's, it's really lit like a Christmas tree, and it would have been great. And we can do this next year, where you have a map where people can just go to the DDA website and look and see where there are some really good Christmas lights for people to, to drive around and, and come to South Lyon and enjoy the city. Are you familiar with the project that is going on with HGTV and the Main Street program?
No, I'm not.
Really interesting. I'll make it really quick. There's two home renovators. Their name is Ben and Aaron Napier, and their HGTV series is called Hometown, and they sort of have a historical bent to their renovations, and they specialize in restoring and bringing back to life small towns. And they have now hooked up with the Main Street program, and they're going to have a series beginning in January. You'll have to check the listings on it. And there, it's a co-partner between HGTV and the Main Street program, and they're going to be tackling another small town. I think it's going to be in Alabama. This particular couple is from Laurel, Mississippi, but they're going to be going into a small downtown, kind of like South Lyon, and they are going to be renovating businesses. It's supposed to be an incredible show. I don't know how many episodes they're going to have, but some of the previews are showing them deciding about murals on buildings and, and how to put together a farmer's market. So, I think they're going to start from vacant land and build up a farmer's market. So, I think the issues that they're addressing, since they're with Main Street program, are going to be probably very interesting for South Lyon, because I think it, and these are artisans. You know, these are people that, you know, understand that that creative hand really does attract people, that you've got to have a lot of creativity when you're working on your facades and designing your stores. And there's apparently going to be a lot of businesses being renovated through this program. And my last comment is on the draft house. It's unfortunate that the demolition permits are only going on the inside. Personally, I just think that it's a corner that does not fit in the downtown. It doesn't look like anything in the downtown. I would hope that those owners come in, whoever they are, and they take a really hard look at the money that our businesses are spending, even during a pandemic. Couple million dollars spent down at the hotel, couple million dollars is going to be spent with Dan's place. And if they think they're going to come in and pump, you know, eighty thousand dollars tearing down some walls inside of that place and call it a day, I think their success is going to be short. So, I'm going to be very vocal about it, because I have business owners that are coming to me and saying, I'm putting all this money into the downtown, into my business, cleaning up my facade. I mean, I mean, for example, I mean, look what was done over for Lemon Tree. I mean, that, I, what was the dollar on that? You know, probably over a million dollars or close to a million dollars on what he spent over there. And everybody seems to be coming to the well and really, really, really providing a phenomenal product in that downtown. And if they don't do the same thing, I'm going to tell you, I, I think there's going to be a lot of disappointment. So, I'm going to be very vocal about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurzweil. Does anyone else have anything for Nate this evening? Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will just follow back up with what Councilmember Kurzweil said about the interactive map for finding Christmas lights. We've talked about in the past, we've talked about using the same app for garage sales in the summertime. So, if you purchase it, you have multiple ways of using it, and I think that it's just a great idea.
Did the mayor quit?
He might be frozen. Looks frozen.
And we don't have a mayor pro temp.
It's unfortunate, because he looks so sad.
Yeah, meeting's over. Good job.
I'll probably come right back.
There he is.
He is our IT guy.
Just had a little bit of a technical mishap there. I am assuming, Councilmember Walton, you are concluded your statement there?
Yes, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you. My apologies. So, does anyone else have anything for Nate this evening? All right, great. Thanks, Nate. I
Thank you.
Some, some things to work on there over, over the holidays.
Yeah, definitely.
Great. We'll move on to the Fire Chief Report with Chief Vogel.
Thank you, Mayor. So, we have heard from the vendor regarding the rescue. We were very close. The issue has been getting product to build the body for the rescue. So, I'm very confident that that'll be leaving soon. Also, we were in negotiations with a city to the south of us to borrow a rescue truck while ours was gone. Unfortunately, their lawyer said there's too much liability. I'm waiting to see if they have a reasonable price. Maybe we could purchase it as a backup truck. More to come. The outdoor vending dining has become a major issue in the state. We, I've been very grateful that the restaurant owners have reached out to us. I encourage all restaurant owners that if they want to have some type of outdoor dining, please reach out so we can work through this together. We're trying to fast-track it. Currently, I'm working with the hotel to get them approved this week. They want to have some out type of dining for the weekend. We're working very hard to make sure it's safe and at a reasonable cost for the restaurant owners. Currently, our department is at full strength health-wise, finally. It's been a while. We have a very important meeting tomorrow regarding the vaccination. I believe that we will start getting vaccinated next week for the fire department. The current plan is to do half the department one week, and then the next half the following week, just for the fact of that there is some reports that people might be sick for a day, and we don't want to get the whole department sick at once. I have encouraging everybody to, my belief, to get the vaccination. I think that gets us through this pandemic, and I believe it's safe, and I hope people do their own research. Half of my department has decided not to do it. The other half has, and that's okay. Finally, some good news. Chief Weir wrote a grant through W O O D TV, Channel Eight out of Grand Rapids. They have a program called Michigan Safe, and we were awarded two hundred and fifty smoke detectors. Just learned of this this weekend. Pretty exciting. I'm grateful to Chief Weir to spend the time that he wrote that grant, and I think this will get us pretty well stocked on smoke detectors. Shouldn't be a problem for a while. So, any questions? Thank you.
Great. Anyone have anything for Chief? Go ahead, Councilmember Kurzweil.
Yes, Chief, I just want to ask a quick question on the vaccine. I have been doing my research. I'm a little bit curious. Have they sort of addressed this issue, the stability of the Pfizer virus, particularly when you draw down on the syringe? Because that's going to be a period of time when you have it in, you know, in the container, and then you draw it out, that it's not going to be in that sub-zero or Arctic temperature. Does that present a problem for stability?
Tomorrow, we really learn a lot. Tomorrow, they really tell us about how they're going to roll it out. I believe that the, the team that will be giving the vaccination will be working out of the Lyon Township Fire Station. So, I heard something about it has to be in dry ice, and then I think they have to it can only be out of it for a couple hours. You know, I do know that they said we're going to get a full dose first, and then a half dose a couple weeks later. I literally think tomorrow will be a big day that I can have all your answers. So, I'll make sure I pass that along if what their details are. This is, Medical Control Board is telling everybody to be on this nine o'clock meeting tomorrow. So, I'm not sure I know your answer. I apologize.
Nope. Thank, thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Chief, I just want to pass along our thanks to Deputy Chief Weir for his efforts in securing those smoke detectors for the city. That's, that's great that we've got, got a good stock once again.
Yeah, very healthy stock now.
Anyone else have anything for Chief Vogel this evening? All right, great. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good holiday.
Thank you, you as well. Move on to the Police Chief Report, and Chief Sobek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Got a couple things tonight. Start working on putting together my two thousand and twenty annual report. It's always a lengthy process for me, and working my way around Microsoft Word and finally putting everything in there together. So, we should hopefully have that. Once the statistics are in for two thousand and twenty, and so you should have that probably early two thousand and twenty-one. I'm still working on getting bids for the generator, a whole building generator for the Lane Police Building. Hopefully, I'll be bringing something to you for the two thousand and one, two thousand and two budget workshop next year. And then we finally took possession of our patrol vehicle today. It came in from Signature Ford. So, by the time that we transfer all the stuff from the older vehicle sitting over and the installation of the new equipment and graphics, we should be looking at probably about a month, a month and a half. The installer is usually backed up this time of the year, so we should have our vehicle up and running by time, hopefully, middle of January, hopefully. And that's all I have, other than the, the new business item for this evening.
Anyone have anything for Chief Sobek? Right. Thanks, Chief. Don't go anywhere. Number one, Fieldstone Plan Development Agreement Approval.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, the property involved in this request is eleven point six five acres on the south side of Lovey Mall Road, approximately a quarter mile west of Pontiac Trail. It's in a regular-shaped parcel adjacent to, in east and west and north of Colonial Acres, and also bordered on the railroad tracks along its western boundary. The city's plan development process is a four-step process, section one oh two through three eighty-three and one oh two through three eighty-six of the zoning levels. In a public hearing, the zoning request and preliminary stage one plan development site plan by the Planning Commission with a recommendation of city council that was completed on May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. The second one is a review and action on the rezoning request and preliminary stage one plan development site plan by the city council, and that was completed on June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. The third step is a review of the final stage two of the plan development site plan by the Planning Commission with a recommendation of city council. This step was completed on September twenty-fourth. Planning Commission recommended that city council approve the applicant's final stage two plan development site plan subject to the conditions. The fourth step is review and action on the final stage two plan development site plan by city council, and that was completed on November twentieth, November ninth, two thousand and twenty. As part of the stage two approval, a plan development agreement between the city and the applicant must be approved and recorded. The plan development agreement has been reviewed by the city attorney, the applicant's attorney, city staff and consultants, and the agreement contains the approved final site plan and elevations and floor plans for the homes approved at the November ninth, two thousand and twenty city council meeting. Tonight, you have attached the plan development agreement and possible course of actions that are approved, denied, tabled, or postponed this item. Kelly McIntyre from CIB is here tonight to talk about the process and answer any questions. Also, the developers are also on the Zoom meeting and are prepared to respond in case you have any additional questions. I'll turn it over to Kelly, or if council members have any direct questions they want to ask right away.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a couple residents contact me that live in Colonial Acres, and they had a couple of questions, and I just wanted to make sure I got it right. They wanted to know, is there, and I don't remember this, is there an anticipated groundbreaking date?
Michael, go ahead.
Thank you. Michael Knowles with the Umler Group, representing Polte Homes tonight. We anticipate, following this meeting, if the PD agreement gets approved, we'll be immediately applying for permits, and we'll have all the permits in place by April. And there should be a groundbreaking either late April or the beginning of May.
All right. And is there, do you have, I would assume you have this, when you want to be completed by?
Yeah, so, it's a smaller development. It should take three months to do the land development work. Following land development work, they'll start building the model and open for sale. Polte's very good at completing the model very quickly. And so, I think it'll be open for sale probably by October. And with fifty units, I would anticipate a sales pace of approximately between twenty-four and thirty a year. So, it should take about a little over, a little under two years to sell through the, through the process. And so, in two and a half years from that first sale, it should be a hundred percent complete.
And you are building them as sold correctly? Correct? You're not building them and then selling them?
That's correct. They, they are sold first and then built. Polte likes to spec a few of them so that there's some quick deliveries available for people who are trying to get in before school and didn't, you know, execute the plan and far enough in advance. So, they like to keep a couple specs on hand. But, yes, in general, most of them will be sold first and then built.
And the last thing, I'm sorry, I have so many questions, but I talked with the city manager about this, and I just kind of wanted it on the record if they're listening, is Lexington Drive, it will not be open, correct?
That, that is correct. Lexington Drive will be blocked by a privacy fence, and there's no ability for Polte as the developer to tie into Lexington Drive. The, the easement that's in favor of the city for access, it only goes to the property line, and Lexington Drive is about ten feet away from that. So, the Colonial Acres folks control their own destiny in that regard.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dill. Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
Mute.
You're muted, Councilmember Kurzweil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also had a lot of residents from Colonial Acres contact me on this issue regarding the development, and the, the one clearly was the access issue, because I was hearing it from not only my client, but from the residents that live there. And I think it's important to understand why there is resistance, is because they have private roads over there, just like your development is going to have. Well, they are responsible for repairing those private roads in that development. They don't want that thoroughfare going through that is going to further burden a fixed-income community. So, not to mention the noise, the traffic, and everything else that it brings, is that those residents that have contacted me are very concerned, you know, about that issue, because they're very, very cost-conscious. Next, I want to go to the Plan Development Agreement itself. I had a couple of questions, and is Patricia here tonight? Yes, I think she is. Okay, good. The first one has to do with the stormwater, and I don't know if Doug Varney could assist on this. But, on page nine, section eight, it talks about stormwater, and that there'll be a stormwater drainage system which shall include both onsite and offsite improvements as necessary. What type of offsite improvements are you anticipating are going to potentially impact the city with this development?
There are no offsite improvements proposed on this. What it generally refers to is the road right-ofways. So, eleven-mile road is technically not Polte's property. It's a road right-ofway, and we will be putting the entrance there, doing a little bit of grading. There's a short section of paving on that road, and so, that's just legal language, language to cover that. But, all of the storm detention But all of the storm detention and outlets and piping is all onsite and it's all depicted on the plan.
Okay, because I couldn't figure out what was going to be offsite. I didn't know if, and, and where's your, I, I assume the lift station that you're going to be using is tied into where?
So there's not, there's not a, a new lift station here.
Right, there's not a new one, but where are you tying into?
It's a gravity sanitary and the tie-in point is out on 11 Mile Road for both the water mains and the sanitary sewer. And so that's what they're generally referring to when they talk about offsite improvements because that road right of way is not owned by the applicant.
Okay, got it. This goes to the city of Patricia. And if we look at page 13, go on page 14, I think possibly on page 15, and this is all dealing with financial matters. And it looks like there is a lot of accounting here in terms of what the developer is going to be responsible for paying, paying inspection fees, paying for this, paying for that. And in the past, the city has not kept real good records of a lot of these costs. And I believe the representation was at a prior city council meeting that you were going to be looking into a software program that would assist you in tracking these particular expenditures that are going to be reimbursable with respect to development. What, what, what is the status of that? Because you got a program, right? I mean, you got a project, right? Knocking on your door where that program could probably be of assistance.
Yes, as a matter of fact, I have been working with BSNA, who is our current vendor for our financial software packages. And they are the group that Plant Moran or Otters actually recommended that we stay within the BSNA software system. I had a training with them on Friday of last week and we're going to have some additional work done in January. So the hope is to be up and running by the end of January. I'll be working with the building department, so Safebuilt, as well as Carol Brandon, who helps with the site plan escrow fees and things like that. And we will be utilizing that system hopefully by February.
Okay, and to the developer, I noticed that here, and this is just a, a technical issue and it's more out of curiosity than anything, is the financial assistance that you are providing to the city is either going to come in the form of cash certified check or a letter of credit. I'm curious why you did not include a performance bond? Is it just because performance bonds are more difficult to work with? Or did the city say, we don't want to deal with performance bonds? We want something a little bit more liquid we can get our hands on like a letter of credit?
That, that's a good question. Those are all standard, you know, inspection fees and, and fees. And those all get posted at the pre-construction meeting before we begin. And when you secure the improvements, we generally prefer to, to issue a bond. A bond is like buying an insurance policy. A letter of credit actually goes against your balance sheet. So a letter of credit has more weight behind it. And so when we're posting a letter of credit, it's typically because the municipality prefers to have a letter of credit because it does have more financial backing behind it.
Okay, well, I, I didn't see a, a performance bond in here. So it looks like it's either going to be cash or certified check or a, a rolling, a line of credit.
Yeah, so, so for the, for the securities that are required, you know, we'll do an estimate and, and, and put out the letter of credit. But for like inspection fees and review fees and non-refundable fees, those are all just cash. So only the letter of credit that secures the improvements that comes back to the developer at the end will be in a form that's not a cash transaction.
Okay, and my last question came from a lot of seniors over in Colonial Acres. And this has to do with the buffer that is going in. And it says in the agreement that, and this is on page 11, paragraph 10, that the buffer shall be installed at the developer's expense prior to the issuance of any building permits for the development. So, so are, are you making a distinction between permits being pulled for site improvements versus permits that are being pulled for an actual construction of a unit?
Yes, great question. We absolutely are making that distinction. And the reason for that is originally, we talked about putting up the buffer to be the first thing up. But the problem is that there's a conflict between the storm and the franchise utilities, which is the, the electric and phone and cable. So if we install the, the fence and the landscaping first, we'd have to tear them all up to put the storm line in and put the electrical line in. So yes, we are making that distinction. We're going to do the development work, install the fence and the landscaping before we're permitted to get our first building permit for the first model home, specs or any for sale homes.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page with that.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. Councilmember Kennedy?
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and make the, the motion to approve the plan development agreement for Fieldstone Site Condominiums, parcel number 21-19-126-002, between the City of South Lyon and Polte Homes of Michigan LLC.
A second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Dill. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Richards?
No.
Walton? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you, Walton.
He's not there.
Oh, we lost her. Well, we could give her a minute if you want. Dill?
Yes.
Hellcat?
Yes. Looks like Councilmember Walton might be back here.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Walton? Thank you.
Sorry, yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your support.
We'll wrap up old business this evening. We'll move on to new business number one. Cat six cabling for new phone lines from Demnet Technologies.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You guys have the information in the agenda note. You guys can read that, but I'll just kind of give you a summary of how we got to where we're at right now. We recently had a Zoom meeting. We were talking about finalizing the project. We have the fiber optic lines run into the access points at all of the buildings, at City Hall, Police and Fire. And so while we're discussing this, we're talking about bringing in the final, the hardware, the actual phones themselves. And throughout the conversation, someone said, well, do you guys have the Cat five or Cat six lines in your station? We're like, I don't even know what a Cat five or Cat six line is. Like, so we basically determined that there was basically an oversight on Comcast. When they sent somebody out to inspect our infrastructure, find out what we had and what we needed, we just assumed that they would let us know that we actually needed these new upgraded, you know, fiber optic Cat five or Cat six lines that are to attach to the phones so they would be, you know, the latest and greatest technology. Well, so that kind of delayed the project. So unfortunately, it's one of these expenses that we didn't, we weren't planning on, but it is absolutely necessary in order for us to finish this project. Everything is installed in all the buildings. We just need somebody to, I basically, basically connect all of our phones, the digital lines from the access points that's already installed in the buildings for Horizon to each phone. It's about 34 to 37 lines. And so with a project like this, with the expense, we had to go out, we got four different bids. And we're presenting you, we're basically making a motion to use Demnet Technologies in the amount of just under $6,800. The person that spearheaded this project, Brienne, she is actually, she's been the liaison with Comcast. She is actually on the call this evening. If you have any questions for her or for me or anything else, we'd be happy to answer them for you.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
So since this was an oversight on the part of the rep from Comcast, what kind of relief did they give us on the, the overall contract? Since they're the ones that didn't catch it and are going to extend the, the project now.
Yeah, well, they weren't very gracious, but we, they were able to, we were able to negotiate a $2,500 credit.
How much is this going to extend the project before we get those phones operational in those buildings now?
Actually, not very long at all because we're going to, if you, if the city council approves this tonight, then we're going to start on Thursday. So he knows the, the situation that we're in and so he's willing to work aggressively to get this, to get this done, so.
Well, I appreciate you extracting $2,500 from those folks. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the hiring of Demnet Technologies for the installation of the Cat six cable lines at the Public Safety Complex and City Hall in the amount of $6,788.79.
Mayor?
Yep. City Attorney Hamamay, please go ahead.
Before that seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry. We got to approve the other part. My apologies. Let me go ahead and do that one.
Well, what I was asking is, we are still, I am still negotiating the terms of this contract with, with the contractor. And I understand they're going to make all the changes that I've asked for. And those are all like the liability indemnification insurance provisions that we always require in our contracts. So I'd ask that your approval be subject to approval by the city attorney.
Okay. With the, the, the first one or the second one? The suggested motion, I'll just put in the, the point at the end then, Lisa?
Yeah, I, yes.
Okay. So I'll make the motion to approve the hiring of Demnet Technologies for the installation of the Cat six cable lines at the Public Safety Complex and City Hall in the amount of $6,788.79, dependent on approval of the city attorney, all the terms and conditions they're working on.
I'll support.
Was that you, Councilmember Walton?
Yes, it was.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, Councilmember Kurtzwell, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, a question for you. I just reviewed a, a contract for a house that's being built. It's going to have a lot of home security in it and they're putting in Cat seven wiring. And, and I, and I sat there and I said, if a home is putting in Cat seven and you're putting in Cat six, do you have the right data speed line that you want? Or were you given that option or, or did you even talk about that? Or did they rule out that kind of cable line?
Well, we originally put out the, the bids for Cat five because that's what we told Comcast was, told us that we needed. And the Devnet Technology said you can actually always go with, Cat five is getting kind of obsolete, but Cat six is going to be more than sufficient for what we need at, at our station as far as security goes and everything. He said that was going to be more than enough for us.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, I have some questions.
All right, Councilmember Richards, just one moment. Councilmember Dill, did you have your hand up earlier?
Yeah, yes, just really quickly. Paul, when we talked about this earlier today, you were going to make mention of how the, how the cost was going to be split.
Total contract is going to be actually between three different departments. It's between Police Department, Fire Department and City Hall for all the work. So we'll have that separated and then you'll see that in the 970 account for capital improvements.
Thank you.
Yeah, and also if I'm not mistaken, I actually think this Comcast is actually going to be cheaper than what we currently have per month.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Richards, you may go ahead now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I don't expect you to know the answer to some of these questions, but I, I'm in favor of everything, but I just have some questions. What about water damage? If we're going through the ceilings of our building at the City Hall and at the other buildings with these lines? Frequently roof leaks have happened in our buildings. And if, if in fact, one leg of one of these lines faults or shorts out, will it affect the rest of the whole system?
Well, that is a good question. I, I can't answer that for you, but I do know that I think the lines are actually coming from the basement up through into the first floor. So I wish I had a better answer for you, but that's as much as I know about that process.
Okay, next question. Okay, because the school owns the, the main City Hall building and other contractors are outside for the school doing work around the outside of the building where the underground lines are and, and in the building from time to time. An inadvertent accident could occur if they don't recognize which lines are which. What, is there any provision for this? Or are the lines going to be different colored or have some markings on them to indicate our Comcast phone lines?
You know, I don't know. I know that they're being brought in from underground. I'm not exactly sure what, what that site looks like. I don't know what Brienne, if, if you have better answers, but I, I don't have that answer for you.
Specifically in the basement, where they're going to be running the Cat six cabling, it's all covered by conduit piping in the basement.
Okay, well, as long as, you know, some recognition is made that accidents do happen. And we're continually all over the city breaking up. We have broken into Comcast lines or gas lines and abandoned sprinkler lines and one thing or another frequently. So accidents happen and I just wondered if there's any provision for this, you know?
Councilmember Richards, from what I understand, I, I believe that the, the underground lines are going to be brought into City Hall. They're going to be completely on the City Hall side. They're not going to be, they're not going to interfere with the school administration side of the building at all.
Right, well, they have the, they have the grass moors and other landscapers and one thing or another from time to time out there. Anyway, just voiced that question and, and something to think about. I'm fully in favor of the project and I hope it, I hope it works. We certainly need it. I guess that's it. Thank you.
You know, I was also able to talk with AT&amp;T and since we haven't had connectivity in our lines, you know, we've been paying these bills. So I called AT&amp;T this past, last week and said, I'm, I'm just not going to, I'm refusing to pay the AT&amp;T bills any longer because you're not providing a service. So I was able to actually to, to negotiate getting a little over $1,000 back from AT&amp;T. You know, they asked me if I wanted a credit. I'm like, why would I want a credit if I'm going to disconnect from AT&amp;T? So they're going to actually send us a check once the, once Comcast is installed, we port the numbers over. I have a contact at AT&amp;T and I let them know once we're up and running with Comcast, they're going to send the city back a check of a little over $1,000 for our hassles.
That's great. Thanks.
Sounds good.
Councilmember Richards, just to ease your stress levels on that, the Cat six cabling that we use at School District comes in a variety of colors. And so I would assume, you know, this isn't the first time Comcast has had to work in an environment like this and they will probably choose a color coordinating Cat six cable that will be able to be told what, which is which. So not a bad question. So thank you for that.
Well, all right. Thank you.
So with that, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Hellcat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brienne and Chief Sobek for being here for that. Thank you, Brienne, for leading that.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
New business number two this evening, fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget amendments. Patricia, I believe we'll give you the lead on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. So tonight I'm going to be presenting to you a list of budget amendments mid-year for our current fiscal year 2021. I have on the agenda note mentioned one thing that I have to correct and I apologize. When I initially sent this out with the council packet on Thursday, after
When I initially sent this out with the council packet on Thursday, after speaking with Chief Sowick, I realized that I had made an error in the Police Department budget portion of the general fund. So I want to, before we go any further, let everyone know that if you look at the budget amendment explanation that was part of the package, under General Fund, the second department listed is Police Department. There was a proposed increase for account line 1013977 for $5,500 for the fencing at the police headquarters. That, I apologize, that was not only a budgeted item that was approved last year when we approved the budget in May. I had put that to the wrong account line. That really is posted to 1013970, which is where it was budgeted and which was approved in the motion at the September 14th council meeting. So we, if we can, I'd like to remove that amount from the proposed increases. So that would make the Budget Department now requesting for police $43,036, and it would change the total amount of the general fund expenditure increase to $195,633. Is there any questions on that before I go any further? Okay, I apologize again about that oversight. So tonight, I have a list of budget amendments based on our knowledge where we're at with our budget as of today, December 14th, 2020. We generally do a mid-year review of the budget and budget amendments if necessary. I would like to point out before we go further that for all of the funds, with the exception of our proprietary fund, which is water and sewer, we will not be taking any money out of fund balance for these additional expenditures that we're discussing. This is, if you look at our income statements, the revenue sheets that go out monthly with the council reports, we have a, we have proposed revenues over expenditures. So we have a, in a sense, budgeted for a surplus of revenues. All of our revenues are on track right now. So with these additional expenditures, we will just be taking away from that surplus that we're projecting, so no fund balances will be touched. Now, for the water and sewer proprietary fund, we had budgeted to be needing to tap into fund balance to cover all of our expenditures, and that has to do with some of the capital improvement projects that we've been discussing at the various council meetings, and of course, were budgeted for this fiscal year. So that, that's adding to that, obviously, those expenditures, but that was already planned for the year. So with that in mind, for the fiscal year 2021 budget amendments, I am requesting an increase in expenditures of, again, $195,633 for general fund, $68,018 for the major streets fund, $12,500 for the Downtown Development Authority Fund, $27,378 for the Capital Improvement Fund, and then $228,329 for our water and sewer fund. Again, I had given you a explanation sheet to kind of break down the actual increase for each of the line items that will be affected in the accounts. Does anyone have any questions for me about these various increases and anything I can answer before we go forward?
Yeah, I got something.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Patricia, is this going to be the new changes that we're making? Okay, will this be a new benchmark, so to speak, for us to go by in the future when we're planning the budget for the next year down the line?
Yes, Councilmember Richards, yes. These budget amendments, if approved tonight, will be added. I will update the fiscal year budget tomorrow. It'll be amended, and it'll become a permanent record, and then we will look at this when we are planning for our fiscal year 2122, have to think of those dates, as we go into that budget process, which we will be getting in January. So this will help us, so we have a better understanding of what our expenditures are so far this year, and we usually look at a three-year average when we're planning for the next year. Does that have a question?
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Does anyone else have anything for Patricia? Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead. Oh, you're muted, Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Patricia, I just want to say thank you for spending some time with me today. You are, you're a definite asset to the city. I I just want to make sure I get it out there that this is the kind of detail that I think is is pretty important when you're doing a budget, and I want to thank you for making that correction with respect to the Police Department, particularly that that item number on that. I think also it's important, and I know we had this discussion this morning on this, and I don't know if you had an opportunity to get with Paul or not, but, you know, there's only about $12,000 to $13,000 left with respect to the surplus that is in that revenue column. So from here on out, if it's a general fund issue, and my question came to you early today, was why aren't you shifting some of these accounts around and pulling money out of accounts that you know just are not going to be spent during this fiscal budget? And and I get it that you're going, you're going to use what what you're calling that surplus in terms of the revenue, but you only have about $13,000 left. So there's not a lot of room left to come back and do a budget amendment, because I am going to be a stickler on keeping that general fund at at the balance that it's at. I am, you know, going to resist attempts to lower that general fund balance any lower than what it already is. I mean, hopefully, next June, we'll be putting money into it, and the and the fund balance will actually increase, as you're showing in your projections. But I just want to get that out there now, that you've got a very small window for any more budget amendments, so that money, I would think, would have to come from some of the individual accounts themselves.
Yeah.
And additionally, I look at that report that comes out in terms of the amount of money that has been spent, you know, the percentages. And I think it's important, if anybody does follow that report, to realize that that is a report with respect to the percentage of expenditures that are out of the revenue, that's under a normal budget, because you have several pages now of amendments, and you can't extrapolate too many conclusions from those numbers right now, because I think they're pretty off a little bit because of all these amendments. So just be careful how you interpret those numbers.
Yes, and if, just answering your second statement, if the amendments are approved tonight, and the budget is able to be updated tomorrow, your next fiscal reports that you'll receive at the first January meeting, those numbers will be updated, so your percentages will be correct based on, with the, with these additional expenditures added in.
Well, with this, with this, it's going to be close to 98 or 99%.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, this is about $200,000.
Yes, and so it will reflect, as you mentioned, with the general fund, that will be down to a projected surplus of about, it just under $13,000, it'll be like $12,900. So the plan will be, and hopefully, you know, this is how we handle things, actually, in June of last year, we will be looking at accounts where the expenditures didn't come out as high as we had budgeted for the year, based on many different factors, because of, you know, maybe the the pandemic, certain projects weren't able to be completed, or there was one thing that the council member and I talked about this morning, overtime not being used in some of the departments. So so there is the opportunity to, within the fund, move money from one account to another if necessary, but of course, there is no fund movement. So one fund does not feed another fund, it has to be within the same fund. But we will definitely look at that and see where we can move accounts around, so that, you know, the ultimate goal is not to touch fund balance. And we will also be looking at our expenses. You know, if there are certain projects, you know, if the revenue stream ends up not projecting the way it is right now, something happens, say, in March, that we're not planning on at this point, then, of course, we will be curbing our expenses, so that we are making sure that we're watching both of those items very carefully, not just the expenditures that are going out, but making sure that that revenue stream is still coming in, so that we are able to, again, end the year as as close to zero as possible, so that we are not going anywhere near those fund balances, with the exception, of course, of the water and sewer fund.
Any more information on state revenue sharing?
I looked today after we had our discussion, the numbers are still, that are posted are still from August, and I went ahead and reran the calculations, and so what is in our budget is still current based on those August projections. So I'm hoping within another, you know, probably because of the holidays, it's going to be January at this point, but I think by the first week in January, we should have some updated projections.
Thank you. You you just are very, very good at at your your job, and you're a real asset to the city. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell, I couldn't agree with you anymore. Does anyone else have anything for Patricia? Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'll make the motion to approve the proposed fiscal year 2020 to 2021 budget amendments.
A second.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Dilg. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Dilg?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Hellcat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, motion passes. Move on to new business number three this evening, Oakland County Assessor of Record.
All jurisdictions within the state per Public Act 600 of 2018 must provide a statutory framework to ensure proper assessing. The city's South Line contracts with Oakland County Equalization Department as their assessor, and per the State Tax Commission, designates David Heber, our 5676 Equalization Officer for the Oakland County as a designated assessor. Tonight, we have attached a resolution approving the interlocal agreement for Oakland County to approve the designated assessor for January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2025. Possible course of action tonight is to adopt or not adopt the resolution approving the interlocal agreement for Oakland County to approve the designated assessor for January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 1st, 2025. Be happy to answer any questions that anybody may have regarding this.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution approving the interlocal agreement for Oakland County to approve the designated assessor for January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2025.
I support.
The motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Dilg. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you again lead us in a roll call vote, please?
Walton?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Hellcat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. New business number four this evening, consider canceling the December 28th, 2020 regular city council meeting.
Our second city council meeting is scheduled for Monday, December 28th. In the past, when the meeting was held in close proximity to the Christmas holiday, city council considered the possibility of canceling this meeting. We advised there's no pressing issues that requires us to hold the second meeting in December, but if need arises, we can certainly advise council and schedule a meeting if necessary. Possible course of action tonight is cancel the city council meeting in December, scheduled for December 28th, 2020.
Councilmember Dilg, go ahead.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to cancel the second city council meeting in December, scheduled for December 28th, 2020.
I'll second.
So we had a couple things there, tech glitch, and it sounded like a couple of voices. Can I, can I get a replay there? Was that you, Councilmember Kennedy?
I seconded, yes.
Okay, sorry, yeah, it, yeah, I had a small glitch over here. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilmember Dilg, supported by Councilmember Kennedy. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you lead us in a roll call vote, please?
Kennedy?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Hellcat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. At this point, we'll move on to the budget this evening. Anyone have anything on the budget tonight? Okay. For our second public comment, I did get a notification. City Clerk Deaton, could you go ahead and see if we have anyone that's waiting for public comment while I I try and find this?
At the moment, no one is raising their hand.
Okay. It may have been Linda Hyaduck from Jim Rundstad's camp. She had been trying to join the meeting. She wanted to let me remind all of you and our residents to please let them know that the Senator is here attending the meeting, and they can reach Senator Rundstad at 517-373-1758, and wanted to wish everyone happy holidays from Senator Jim Rundstad. So thank you, Linda. As long as we haven't had anyone raise their virtual hand, we will move on to managers' report this evening with city managers.
I want to remind council that the conditional rezonia application for the industrial industrial zone property on Dixboro Road will be brought before the planning commission at their January 14th meeting. And also, at last Thursday's planning commission, planning commission discussed the potential new mural ordinance. So I want to advise council that they can still look on the website to review the water tank installation work that's being done out there. Next thing is regarding the COVID-19 update, our staff continues to have meetings, we have meetings every week. As the chief mentioned, tonight, there's an important meeting having tomorrow, and I'm sure we'll be updating council as to what transpired during and through my next manager's report. The 2021 and 22 budget, I did remind council that I'm taking their recommendations for goals for the upcoming year, and please try to have those to me by January 8th. City offices are in fact closed for the Christmas Eve and Christmas Day holidays for December 24th and 25th, and also for New Year's Eve and New Year's Day, that's Thursday, and Friday, December 31st and January 1st. Council, I want to make sure that everybody got their ID badges that they saw inside the packet that we got. I've done that, other communities, everybody would have an ID badge when they attend events or in your capacity or function as a city council member. I think that goes a long way in showing who you are as city council members and representing our community. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody may have regarding my report.
Councilmember Dilg, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have just a couple things. One is, and maybe I'll just put this on goals or something, but I did drive by the houses that are by that tank, and I know we discussed it, but it is, it's terrible. If that was in my backyard, I would be so disappointed. And if there's anything we can do, any way we can move up a wall or shrubbery or s-. a wall or shrubbery or something, it just, I was shocked, to be honest. I thought it was, it was worse than I thought.
Oh, yeah.
I had noticed it from afar before, but getting up close and took some pictures. So when we talk about, I don't know, budgeting for next year or something, if there's a way we can move up fixing that, and you don't have to answer that, I just, I would appreciate it. And then I had a question about, on the code enforcement stuff, this blight that keeps seeming to happen outside the clothing bins. And I've noticed it myself also. I know they were having trouble getting ahold of somebody and they seemed like they finally did. Is there any kind of, what kind of agreements do we have with those companies if they aren't, if they can't keep up with the donations where they will have to take those out or do something else?
Well, we don't necessarily have agreements with them. Those agreements that are in place were with the clothing companies and the property owners.
Okay.
We are enforcing to ensure that those bins, obviously, in today's day and age, there are obviously people that do have specific needs regarding clothing and finances, especially during COVID. We're trying to be cognizant of that, but we have to ensure that they are kept up. And our ordinance officer has been keeping up and has had direct contact with those bins as well as some of the property owners because there were some instances where the property owners were not even informed of those bins being placed on their property. And our ordinance officers are looking to have some of those removed. I believe you already, a couple have been removed since our last council meeting.
That's great. And I just want to say thanks for the ID badge. Appreciate it. That's all, thank you.
Anyone else have anything? Councilmember Richards, go right ahead.
Paul, on the Liberty Street matter, and it's very good, it's very wonderful. DPW made some patches on some small defects. I'm just wondering, it's probably to our advantage that Liberty Street was considered a major street in classification. But I'd like to know who made that determination? Did HRC or the DPW or who made the determination to classify Liberty Street as major street? And is there a timetable for the rest of the repairs in that area where it's deteriorated badly? That's all, thank you.
The major streets and local streets are determined based upon use, and that's done through reporting with Act 51 in the state of Michigan. So determined based upon vehicles, the type of traffic that comes through and direct correlation to the downtown and what type of vehicles may traverse on that particular road. That particular section of road was identified as being in need of repair. And through my conversations and applying for the funds through the, through Oakland County, we were able to get funds to that because it does border directly on our business district. So we had so many funds that were able to be used, a certain amount of dollars had to be used by the end of this year. We were trying to couple those dollars for several years and the county advised us that we had to spend a certain amount by the end of this year. And that's why we went forward with the project because we didn't want to lose any of those funds. Those funds may not be available in the future, so we did hurry up and get that done. My recommendation would be to continue on that section of street and do additional improvements and put that within next year's budget to complete other sections of concrete work. Hopefully, we can obtain some other funds in another means at which to get that done.
I understand, very good.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Does anyone else have anything for city manager Zellner this evening? All right, thank you, Paul. Move on to council comments. We'll start with Councilmember Kennedy this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to let our residents know that if you missed the last yard waste collection by GFL in November, the DPW has set up a dumpster in the DPW yard and you can drop off your yard waste bags at that location between 7:00 AM and 3:30 PM, Monday through Friday, except holidays. So, you know, take them over there, throw them in the back of your vehicle as opposed to letting them sit there and deteriorate on your curb over the winter. And finally, I just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas or Happy Hanukkah, a joyous Kwanzaa. Or in the words of Jerry Stiller from Seinfeld, and I quote, "A happy Festivus for the rest of us." And have a great holiday and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of comments tonight. I just want to thank the Kiwanis for donating the tree in the historical village. And thank you to Martin's Hardware for handing out the ornaments. The children of the city have done a wonderful job decorating them and I really hope that we can keep that tradition going in future years. I also want to make a comment about, this is a holiday season that our local businesses have always supported our schools, our students, our extracurricular activities, our community, and now is our time to support them. Consider purchasing a gift card for carryout or for sitting on the patios of our local restaurants. Shop local for your gifts. You know, if you want to get out in our downtown area, bring a blanket, sit and enjoy the lights. We have a great magic in our city for the season and just get out there and enjoy it. Consider gifting that to your friends and family when you're out shopping. And last but not least, speaking of shopping local, I want to acknowledge Diane of Diane's House, her equal match to our local reelected county commissioner, Phil Whiteford, and his donation to the Toys for Tots that he purchased in her downtown store. So just again, shopping local, supporting our businesses, keeping our businesses going. I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday season. Stay safe, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton, some great reminders there. Councilmember Kurtswell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would like to extend a very, very Merry Christmas out to all the employees in the city and their families for their incredible dedication and commitment to the city and the residents in the year 2020. We have got the most incredible employees in the world. I never heard a complaint from one employee. They came to work every day during COVID. They went over and above, and I just hope that you and your families are blessed this Christmas. And thank you so much for being an employee here in the city of South Lion. Second, I too would like to bring to the attention the Marines program, Toys for Tots. There is a drop-off in town. It's at Peters True Value. What an incredible hardware store we have right here in South Lion. Peter and Sean and everybody over there, please find a gift for a child and drop it off and let the Marines do what they do best, and that is helping people. So let's not forget that. Next, please take some time the next couple of weeks and drive through our wonderful downtown and look at some of the homes and see how well they are lit. It's absolutely incredible, some of the homes and what they've done. It looks beautiful in the downtown neighborhoods. I just, I mean, they really, really are going out this year. Additionally, I would like to bring to attention an incredible, the Christmas sub, as everybody calls it, that's Hidden Creek Subdivision at Nine Mile and Dixboro. If you have not seen the sub, you need to see it. And they really went out this year. I think a lot of it had to do with the fact people were home. I think the weather was good. But this is a sub where you can actually feel like it's Frankenmuth and it's Christmas. So please stop by Hidden Creek Subdivision and enjoy the lights, park your car, walk with your kids. And most of all, everybody, forget about what's going on in the world right now. Get out there and enjoy Christmas. Write some cards, bake some cookies. Get ready for your Christmas holiday with friends and neighbors. I know that's what I'm doing. Get out and walk, enjoy Christmas. It only comes once a year. And let's not forget that Christmas does bring hope. So there is hope for us through the season of Christmas that things will be good and better in 2021. Take care, everybody, stay safe, and we'll see you in January.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtswell. Councilmember Richards?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to just amplify Maggie's comments there. I certainly, we certainly have wonderful employees and they've achieved miracles throughout the year. No doubt about it. I keep a little bit of a closer eye on some of the things and I make suggestions from time to time. And things really move along well. Also, I want to congratulate the Kiwanis. I've been by there, things are moving very well with their Christmas tree sales and they should be pretty well sold out by the end of this week, it seems. That's really an achievement. And also, at the historic village, if you happen to notice, we moved the Christmas, the larger Christmas tree that usually sits on the porch at the museum, it comes out of the basement where it's stored through the winter and put it in the gazebo. It's a green tree, it's a couple of feet taller than the other one and the silver one that we used last year. And it's beautiful from the street and you can see it beautifully. And there's a star on it. Anyway, I wish everybody a happy holiday season and do your best and think about the positive things we've accomplished and the good things that are coming up. And try to maintain a good attitude towards your fellow man and dealing with people and try to be kind. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and some great reminders there, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Dill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be very brief because pretty much everybody already covered everything. But I just also wanted to thank our residents because if you have been out and about, you will see our residents really supporting downtown and it's really supporting South Lion businesses. I've seen them out in big coats and blankets to sit outside to support our restaurants, waiting in line to get into stores so that they don't overcrowd, everybody being patient. And I've just been really, really happy to see that. I've been talking to a lot of the shop owners who said that they are having good holiday sales. So I just wanted to thank everybody for trying to keep it local and just try to keep in mind our businesses that are not open and when they do get back open, that those are the ones we need to jump on and support pins and the movie theater and people who've been community partners for us a long time. So I just want to say thank you and happy holidays.
Councilmember Dill, great reminders too, with the reminder of our, some of our businesses that have been closed a lot longer than some of the other ones. So I'm going to piggyback off Councilmember Kurtswell. I'm just so proud of our staff. They're just, they answered the bell all year and what is, will go down as a very difficult year for many of us. As we approach the holiday season here, I definitely want to wish all of our residents and staff a happy, or excuse me, a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holidays and a Happy New Year. And, you know, stay safe out there, let's be good to each other. Let's try and support our local businesses and we're in for a great 2021. So keep your head up out there. That's all I have. Instead of a motion to adjourn this evening, I'm going to kick it over to our city attorney, Ms. Hamame, after I remind everyone, if we do get the motions to go into closed session, those watching the council meeting, if you leave the meeting and then re-enter the meeting, there is a waiting room that you will be in once we come back out of closed session if you are interested in waiting to see if we take any action later. And if I did not do that well enough, city attorney Hamame, please feel free to chip in.
It was perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Kurtswell, please.
Is the mayor ready for a motion?
Yes, please.
I move to go into a closed session pursuant to Section 8E and H of the Open Meetings Act to discuss pending litigation in Lockwood versus City of South Lion.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kurtswell, supported by Councilmember Walton. City Clerk Deaton, if you could please lead us in a roll call vote.
Dill?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kurtswell?
Kurtswell?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Haltat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, the motion passes.
We still have a few people that are in the meeting.
Okay. I wasn't, yeah, I know that can be a little bit of a confusing process.
No, we got one more person. Nope, she's gone. All right, I'll stop the recording or pause it. And I'll keep an eye on the waiting room. Hopefully it'll work, okay.
Thank you, and a second to return. City Clerk Deaton, do we do a roll call vote for that? Would you prefer that, city attorney Hamame? Okay.
Oops, hold on one second.